Good evening. We will start this evening out with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, and welcome to the first meeting of the new year. We will have roll call.
Alum is absent. Odie?
Here.
Pumper?
Here.
Saxor is absent. Talcott?
Here.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting?
Agenda first.
Oh, wait. What's that?
Agenda first.
Agenda, where are we at? Oh, yeah. First of all, excuse me, this is my first time doing this in a long time, all right? So we might be here till 8:30. No. No. Okay. With the agenda in front of us, is there approval of the agenda tonight?
I make the motion to approve the agenda.
Second? All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Now, there is no conflict of interest or waiver request, so at this point, we will, we've all had time to review the minutes of the last December 9th meeting, as well as the special meeting we had December 11th. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
There's a first and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Okay. We will go to community inputs, which there aren't anybody, is not, there are not in, isn't anybody here tonight, so we will move on to financial items with Mr. Lumberg going through bills and claims.
Okay. Any questions from board members on the bill listing that we provided in your packet? I had just a couple noted on page two. City of Brandon, one half of the school resource officer, $24,777. It's one half of the total cost of the resource officer for the year. Page three, Continental Western Group, we're refunding to them a duplicate insurance payment. We switched insurance companies as of July 1st. We had a suburban accident, so both companies paid us. We got, had to pay back Continental Western, the old insurance company, $10,170. Page four, the quarterly payments to Teach Well Solutions. It's a new program we started this year, paying quarterly on all those programs. The only other one I noted is at the back, the last page, U.S. West Bank, bond insurance, or general obligation bonds, and capital aid certificates, all interest payments. You'll notice on that, the $142,014, that's on the new bonds that we just issued. It's kind of a unique deal that we did when we issued those bonds to make certain that we weren't raising any tax levies. We put some money aside of the bond to pay back the interest, because there are current interest right now, so we have to make a payment on them, but we utilized bond proceeds to do that, so it's kind of a unique way of financing, therefore assuring that we don't raise the tax levy on our citizens. Total of $820,616. The advanced payment breakdown of $9,555 is itemized for your review. $43,879 of pay vouchers, mostly substitute teachers. And then lastly, $104,065 of food service bills. Any questions or comments from anybody?
With that being said, with Paul's has given us, is there a motion to approve those bills and claims?
So moved.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Okay. We will proceed on to the financial report. Mr. Lumberg.
Okay. The cash report for the month of December showed $25.9 million coming into the month. We had receipts of $3,951,000, and dispersments of $5.5 million left, $24,321,000 at the end of December. $5.5 million was in the general fund, $1 million in the capital fund, $660,000 in the special education fund, $53,000 in the pension fund, $26,000 in the enterprise fund, and $17 million in our capital projects, our bond issue fund. The $3,951,000 of receipts for the month of December itemized in the next two pages. Following that is an investment report, $1 million CD at First National Bank, and then what we did with the investment of our bond proceeds is invested in a ladder series of U.S. Treasury bills. They average 1.6%. As you can see there, $16,400,000, and they'll just keep coming due as the payments for the construction costs come due. Payroll and benefits summary. Payroll for the month of December was $2,067,000, just slightly over the $2 million mark that we agreed upon, or stated that would be the normal monthly payroll for the 1920 school year. The reason it's slightly higher is December was a five-week pay period for the hourly staff. And then the financial statements, the revenue report first. General fund, 44.4% for revenue received to date. Most of them are low 40s, nothing concerning there. On the expenditure side of things, the general fund is at 50.78, which is about a half a percent higher than where we were last year, and I've been repeatedly saying that, about a half a percent, averaging about a half a percent higher than where we were last year, which would put us at fully expended, 100% expended at year-end, so there's absolutely no fluff in the general fund expenditure side of things. No other concerns on the other funds. Capital aid, 73% expended. Special ed, 48.78. Bond redemption, just under 90%. The food service fund shows a deficit of $54,000 through December 31st. Trust and agency report has $173,747 amounts held for others. And then lastly, I have a capital project financial statement, our first one, on our bond issue project coming up. We have incurred some expenses, bond issuance fees, and then we bought that land, which was also a component of the bond issue. Any questions?
Yeah, and the reason that, Greg, would be that we do anticipate before we're done, the city of Sioux Falls buying back some of that land, so it'll be an offset against that. They'll buy back whatever number of acres. Yeah, we should be back to the $750,000.
Okay. If there's any other questions, do I hear a motion to approve the financial report?
So moved.
Second?
Second. All those in favor? Say aye. It's passed. Okay. On to, oh, where are we at here? Down to general business. We will have administrative reports, and being Mr. or Superintendent Larson is not here, we will view him through a video.
... inform the Board of Education on a variety of items this evening. Smart Elementary School construction timeline, been working through the construction planning process, looking to advertise the construction project here in the next week or so, and ultimately looking to approve the construction bid at our second Board of Education meeting in February, which is Monday, February 24th. Construction will begin in the spring of '20, as weather allows. We will have an elementary boundary line, take a look at our elementary boundaries as the new school will warrant a change in elementary boundary line. The construction process will continue through all of the 2021 school year, and we plan to open our elementary school in the fall of 2021. Registration is open for kindergarten screening. If you know anyone that has an age-eligible child and is interested in attending kindergarten, please have them contact one of our respective elementary schools. School board election, we have one three-year seat. April 7th is the earliest date to circulate a petition. May 8th is the deadline for petitions. It is relevant to note that candidates must file a financial interest statement within 15 days of filing a nominating petition. June 16th, 2020, is the school board election date. Contact the business office if interested in more details. Looking to our next school year, we will have some additional staffing requests. I will tell you that late February is when I intend to bring forward the additional staffing recommendations. Then, after approval, late February, early March, those positions are advertised, and recommendations to hire will be coming following the interview processes, et cetera. Looking at our negotiations and wage recommendations for next year, I want to provide the board just a general summary of the timeline. We will have some pre-negotiations with the BVA in March. Mid-March to early April is when we will actually engage in the negotiations process. The Personnel Welfare Committee and the BVA will engage in that process and work through negotiations. Tentatively, on April 14th, we will bring forward the master contract for ratification. We'll also look to approve classified wage recommendations, administrative salary recommendations, et cetera, at our April 14th Board of Education meeting. We are currently engaged in the preparation work for the 2021 budget. We have budget forms, documents, et cetera, have been distributed. They will now be compiled and reviewed by the central office. In February, you'll see a presentation of the five-year plan, which has been created through each of our respective buildings submitting a five-year plan of their school building. In March, we will have a preliminary capital aid budget presentation for you, and we will seek approval. It is necessary for this so that we are able to bid major items in a timely manner. So the preliminary capital aid budget will be presented in March, and we will look for that to be approved. In May, you can expect to see a preliminary budget presentation, and then ultimately in July, we will hold our public budget hearing and seek board approval. We'll be kicking back up good news reports, the second meeting of the month, starting in January. The Brandon Valley High School will be joining us. In February, Brandon Valley Middle School. In March, the Intermediate School. And in April, our elementary schools will be presenting a good news presentation to the Board of Education. I have a few upcoming calendar items for this year to note. There is no school Monday, January 20th for teacher in-service. I would note that corresponds with Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Friday, February 14th, no school. Monday, February 17th, no school. That is President's Day. We will have parent-teacher conferences in the month of March. Monday, March 16th, will serve as the parent-teacher conference date for our elementaries and high school. Tuesday, March 17th, will serve as the parent-teacher conference date for our intermediate school and middle school. Thursday, March 19th, school will be in session. It is a snow day, but rather this year, it is a flood day. Friday, March 20th, there is no school, and that is a comp day for parent-teacher conferences. As always, feel free to contact me if you have any questions. Thank you so much.
Okay. Continuing on with administrative report. Mr. Lumberg, do you have any additional information? Okay. High school, Mr. Frecking. I'll just look. Skipstead? Kyle? Bab?
I just wanted to give a report on our special ed review. Last week, the Department of Education came onsite to review our IEP paperwork, our special education paperwork. They come for this kind of monitoring once every five years, so it's kind of a big deal. They meet with each special education teacher and speech and language therapist, and go over a file with each one of those teachers that are speech and language therapists, and determine whether or not we are in compliance with state and federal laws. They have over 90 different items that they check within that paperwork, and last Thursday, we had an exit review with that team, that monitoring team, and they indicated to us that we only had a 1% error rate, which for a district our size is a really good error rate. So needless to say, I was very pleased with the results of our special education review. I just want to publicly state that my staff, or the special education staff, have worked really hard this year to prepare for this review, through in-service trainings and the like, and obviously they had to put in some time, after-hours, to make sure that their paperwork was in order, and all that hard work and extra effort really did pay off. The monitoring team found no major areas of concern with our paperwork, and only just some minor things that I'll have to work to correct over the next coming months, but we'll be able to certify that report before the end of the school year. So, does any board member have any questions about that? All right. Thank you very much.
I guess I'd like to say that on behalf of myself and the entire school board, I'm speaking for them all, I hope. Good job, and you're doing an outstanding job over there. Okay. Brad Thorson? Mrs. Hoffcamp? Mrs. Palmer? Mr. Horst? Mrs. Nelson? Mr. Marshall? Okay. We'll just keep moving on here. Okay. We'll go, next will be under board policies. In your packet, you see that we have our first reading of two laws that we're, policies we're looking at, KGC and FF.
Again, this is just for our viewing tonight. It's our first reading, so we can't take any action, but we need more members. Two board policies that will receive their first reading. The first board policy that we will be conducting our reading on is tobacco-free school policy. The Brandon Valley Board of Education, recognizing that the Surgeon General of the United States has stated that tobacco products and tobacco, smoke pose a serious threat to the health and well-being of the district's students, employees, and patrons, and knowing that these products are detrimental to a helpful and effective operation of the schools, hereby adopts the following policy. The Brandon Valley School District Buildings and Grounds are 100% tobacco-free at all times, for all persons, without exception. Use of any type of tobacco is prohibited on or in district parking lots, in district-owned vehicles, and in personal vehicles located on school property. For purposes of this policy, tobacco products include but are not limited to cigarettes, pipes, cigars, hookah, snuff, dissolvable tobacco, or chewing tobacco, as well as unregulated nicotine products, such as electronic cigarettes and other vaping devices, which may or may not contain tobacco. This policy applies to all persons regardless of age and regardless of whether they may legally use the products. A couple items I wanted to note prior to discussion. Previously, we had a question on the topic of including cessation language in our tobacco-free school policy. After consulting with our legal counsel, legal counsel does not recommend the inclusion of any nicotine cessation language within the school district policy. Receiving a first read this evening is facilities planning and development, naming facilities. In selecting a name for a new school, the superintendent shall form and facilitate a committee consisting of parents, teachers, administrators, the school board building and grounds committee chair, or other board member, community members, and students. The name for the school shall be selected from the following categories. Donation of the land by a school district patron. Specific naming rights as outlined in the purchase agreement. Presidents of the United States. Persons who have achieved distinction in such fields as art, literature, music, education, or science. Individuals who have made a significant contribution to society. Location of the school. Its street or direction. Famous event or location. The name shall have withstood the test of time. The committee shall formulate a recommendation for school board approval at a regular scheduled One item I wanted to note, as previously discussed and described, the timeline, if adopted at the January 27th Board of Education meeting, or its next reading, which would be its second reading. January 27th, the policy is adopted. Then, in February, the committee would be formed, and then throughout the month of February, March, committee naming recommendation process would be facilitated by the superintendent, and ultimately I would anticipate a formal recommendation to the Board of Education in the month of April. Any discussion?
Is there any discussion amongst board members here tonight? If not, being this is our first reading of it, we will view it again next, in two weeks. Going on to general business, the 2021 proposed calendar.
Welcome to 2020, 21 proposed academic calendar presentation. The following academic calendar has been vetted through the Administrative Council, the Teaching Liaison Council, and the Classified Council. I certainly appreciate each and every one of those groups and their insights and feedback into the development of our proposed academic calendar, and it would be the consensus of those groups that the following 2020, 21 academic calendar is adopted in the future by the Board of Education. So key points of emphasis for the 2021 calendar that I really want to note and reinforce is that our proposed calendar is consistent and corresponding to the 2019, 20 calendar. We'll now go into a month-by-month breakdown of the proposed calendar. Looking at August, you can see our preschool year start schedule has new staff in service on Wednesday, August 12th, and then we have split workshop in-service days on Thursday, August 13th, Monday, August 17th, and Tuesday, August 18th. School starts for students on Wednesday, August 19th, 2020. September, we have no school on Monday, September 7th, which is Labor Day. We also have fall parent-teacher conferences in September. On September 28th, the Intermediate School and Middle School will hold parent-teacher conferences, and on September 29th, our elementaries and our high school will hold parent-teacher We are continuing the earlier dates in Semester 1 for parent-teacher conferences, which were staff requests in prior years. We will also continue the practice of holding regular school days on parent-teacher conference dates. And then we will continue to utilize a dinner schedule that is staggered and rotating for our parents' convenience. When they attend parent-teacher conferences, there will always be a staff member available to meet with, and then our Friday of that week is comp day for parent-teacher conferences. So looking at October, you can see that Friday, October 2nd, there is no school for comp day. There's also no school on Monday, October 12th, for in-service. That corresponds with Native American Day. Looking at November, you can see there is no school on Wednesday, November 11th, which is Veterans Day, and Thanksgiving break, there is no school on Wednesday, November 25th, Thursday, November 26th, or Friday, November 27th. Moving to December, you can see winter break begins with a two-hour early dismissal day on Wednesday, December 23rd, and then our winter break will run from Thursday, December 24th to January 3rd. School resumes Monday, January 4th, 2021. There is no school on Friday, January 8th, for workshop in-service day. It is relevant to note that that workshop day at the end of Semester 1 is required in accordance to our negotiated agreement with the Brandon Valley Education Association. There is no school on Monday, January 18th. There is teacher in-service. That date corresponds with Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Looking at February, you can see there is no school on Friday, February 12th, and no school on Monday, February 15th, which is President's Day. No school on Friday and no school on Monday provides students, parents, and staff with a four-day weekend over the President's Day weekend. In March, we have spring parent-teacher conferences scheduled. March 15th will serve as the date for our elementary and high school parent-teacher conferences, and March 16th will serve as our date for intermediate school and middle school parent-teacher conferences. Again, parent-teacher conference days are regular school days, and we utilize that staggered and rotating dinner schedule for our parents' convenience. There is no school on Thursday, March 18th, and that is a snow day, and there is no school on Friday, March 19th. That is comp day for parent-teacher conferences. Moving to April, you can see spring break corresponds with Easter. We have a two-hour early dismissal day on Thursday, April 1st, and there is no school on Friday, April 2nd. And there is no school on Friday, April 2nd, or Monday, April 5th. Moving to May, 2021, you can see that Brandon Valley High School graduation is on Sunday, May 16th. The last scheduled day for students is on Wednesday, May 19th. Workshop for staff on Thursday, May 20th. So a couple of special notes and items that I would draw your attention to, especially when we consider consistent and corresponding is the message that we are sharing on the proposed calendar. The start date is aligned to past years. There is no school Wednesday of Thanksgiving week. Two-hour early dismissal days are utilized prior to winter and spring break. In-service is scheduled for staff, and no school for students on Native American Day and Martin Luther King Jr. Day. There is no school on Friday of President's Day weekend. And additional days necessary due to weather will be handled with our one snow day and all others added to the end of the year. So if you have any comments or questions, feel free to contact me via email. Our timeline is there is potential adoption of the 2020-21 calendar at our next Board of Education meeting, which is scheduled for January 27th. Thank you, and I hope you enjoyed the 2020-21 Proposed Academic Calendar Presentation.
Okay, being there's no action to be taken on this tonight, we are looking at under general business, number two and three. Do I hear a motion of consent approval?
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Passed. We'll move on to personnel. Personnel, I'm looking for consent approval under one through four. Is there any questions? Oh, one through, yeah, one through 20, one through 20, excuse me.
So moved.
Sorry.
Second. Been a first and a second. All those approved?
Aye.
All those opposed? Passed. Okay. There's some communications listed here in our packet. We'll also go down to board reports. Are there any formal board reports that wish to be talked about this evening?
Sure, I'll just share quick. Last Friday, due to Mrs. Nelson, Mr. Larson, Dr. Larson's absence tonight, we had our curriculum meeting, and so the majority of our meeting talked about the sped review. And so I just think it's worth repeating 99%. That's pretty awesome. So, well done. I just want to commend Mr. Bab and his crew for doing such a good job. I don't know how it all goes exactly, but it sounds like a lot of work, so nicely done. Thank you for your efforts there.
Nobody else has any this evening? There's some travel, let's see, there's no travel reports. So I guess at this point, I'll ask for an entertainment for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
For a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Meeting adjourned.